You lost the bet, Ashley, that's why. All right, it is now 9:00 AM. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, please. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Commissioner Nelson is doing the invocation today.
Well, good. I thought we were skipping. So I have the pleasure of introducing a young man. If you'd step up to the podium. This is Elijah Bauer. He's a senior at Traverse City Christian, and he's graduating as one of three valedictorians this year. And the school official that recruited him to come today, I don't know if he told him or recruited him, said that he's a gentle spirit with a heart of gold, so take it away, sir.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Once again, thank you for having me here today. It's always good to pray before any meeting like this, before any real thing of decision-making. It's good to have God here in the presence of us as we do this, so if you would pray with me. Lord, thank you so much for this day. Thank you that we get to come here and make decisions, decisions that will affect the good of this county, of this city, Lord. Thank you so much for people like the commissioners here, who've put in positions of leadership to be beneficial to this county, Lord. Please help their discussions today to be productive and beneficial to the community they serve and the city they oversee, Lord. Please help their actions today to reflect the truth, the justice, and the purpose that their vocation requires. Lord, please, I pray for guidance, for thoughtful decision-making. Please uphold their integrity, Lord. Please just give them a humble heart to serve you and serve their community to the best of their abilities. We pray this all in your heavenly Father, in your Lord Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
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 Now get back to school so you don't lose that valedictorian status.
Thank you very much.
There's extra seats over here, too, along the back, if people are looking for extra seats.
Thank you.
Bonnie, if you could do a roll call vote for us, please. Or a roll call, rather, not a vote, excuse me.
Morris?
Here.
Andrews?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Henchel?
I'm here.
Spence?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
McAllister?
Here.
Seifert?
Here. Thank you. So now we're looking for a motion to go into closed session. This is the consultant attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the McIntosh v. Klaus case, because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the public body. This is permitted by MCL 15.261E.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Support.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because this is before the approval of the agenda, is it still okay to go into closed session before we approve the agenda? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
All right, so we have a motion by Henchel and approved by, I'm sorry, I missed it. Spence?
I think several of us did.
Somebody did.
Pick one.
Pick one. I'm gonna pick Spence. So Commissioner Henchel moved. Spence seconded. All those in favor?
Roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call vote. Thanks. Rob.
Andrews?
Yes.
Nelson?
Hi, yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
There we have it. All right, closed session, we will go. We shall return, I promise.
We're going.
Let me log back in here.
Looking at your stickers.
Oh, I know. I didn't, I didn't mean to bring the sticker one.
I do that. Most of my water.
Did you just call us back in order?
Nothing looks excessive.
Yeah?
No, I think you're fine.
But I don't think I got it.
I was watching, making sure.
Got a vote. Motion by Commissioner Hansel, second by Commissioner Andrews. Come back in open session. I got it out. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. All right. So, going to make the motion. I move to accept the recommendation of the county's litigation council regarding the settlement of the McIntosh v. Klaus case, and I authorize the board chair, myself, to sign all necessary documents consistent with the recommendation discussed in closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, the motion by Seifert, second by Walter. Bonnie, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Nelson?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Pence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Security. Now, we're going to do the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of April fifteenth, Board of Commissioners' annual equalization meeting, regular meeting of April sixteenth, and study session of April twenty-third.
Support? Awesome.
I have an edit.
Of course. By all means.
Sorry, I'm, it's taking a second to pull up. The study session of March, April twenty-third indicates, right after the agenda is approved, that we took a break at nine twenty-three and then came back at ten oh one. That's clearly out of order because then it's, indicates we had the Public Health Department hearing, so I just think that the break is out of place. Usually, the break comes in the meeting where the break happens. The April twenty-third study session, the last in this, in the section, you'll just see at the top of page two, it looks like we approved the agenda and went straight into a break, which we didn't.
Two of six and seventeen of four hundred.
With that, with that correction, that's a minor change.
Yes. The mover agrees with the friendly amendment.
Second on that?
Brian.
Brian, shake your head yes.
Brian agrees?
Yes.
There you go. Beautiful. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fantastic. We'll move on to first public comment. Bonnie, if you please.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board may state his or her name and township or district. Providing a specific address is not recommended. Persons may address the board on matters or issues which are relevant and germane to county government as determined by the chairperson. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the board. Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson. The board shall not comment or respond to a person who is addressing the board. Silence or non-response, non-response from the board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement by the board. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Thank you, Bonnie. So, if you've ever watched us before, since I've been chair, we kind of play it fast and loose and change it up sometimes. This is what we're going to do today. You don't need to raise your hand. You can just get in line. But we are going to be hardcore about the three-minute rule today because all of you beautiful people here that I imagine have something to say. So, we want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak, okay? So, just line right up behind the podium in line. If you want to speak, tell us who you are. What you doing here? You'll have three minutes.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Lander Bockert. I represent the Traverse Bay Children's Advocacy Center. I'm going to move this down because I am approximately five foot three in shoes, and I wanted to thank you all first for your hard work to make this county and this district better when, when people have housing and jobs and recreation. As it turns out, they're nicer to kids, and the less kids we see, the better and the happier we are. So, the Traverse Bay Children's Advocacy Center is the regional response. We cover six counties and the tribe for allegations of criminal neglect and child sexual abuse. That means when there are allegations, children are referred to us. They are run through forensic interviewing by specialists, trained in how to best talk to kids, how to do this in a trauma-informed way, how to keep kids safe. We then offer free counseling to any family or non-offending caregiver member that needs it for as long as they need it. We offer this free of charge to anyone who is referred to us by our local, state, or federal agencies. We work with everyone from Homeland Security to city police. We also have a fairly robust prevention program that allows us to train people in everything from recognizing signs and symptoms of possible child abuse to sex extortion to how to talk about sex with your kids, which I've heard is hard. My kid's only two, so I haven't gotten there yet, but in the future. Lastly, the work that we do is funded in large part by federal dollars. About seventy percent of our funding comes from the Victims of Crime Act, which means if you commit an oopsie or crime against the U.S. government and you have to pay a fine, that money goes into a pot. That pot then funds all victims of crime because of policy and administration changes. That pot gets smaller every year rather than larger. So, as we move forward, we are looking for ways to better involve the community to help us caretake the kids that we serve. Any questions?
Any question? Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thanks for showing up today.
Yeah, my pleasure.
God, I can't spell.
My name is Margie Rich. I live in Peninsula Township, and I'm here today on behalf of the proclamation that the county commission is going to be signing in recognition of Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month. And first off, we work closely with the CIC. They do great work, and I hope that you're able to support them as well. First, I want to thank you for this resolution. I think it brings awareness to an issue in our area that many people aren't familiar with. In Grand Traverse County, there were about a hundred and sixty-three births to teen parents in a short five-year period. That's a hundred and sixty-three moms, dads, and babies that we're talking about, so well over five hundred people that are, have been impacted through a pregnancy to a teenager. Teens have many, teen parents have many challenges that they face. If you recall, if any of you are parents yourselves, the sleepless nights, the challenges of being a new parent worried about your baby, add to that, or a couple of, with having to attend school, support this child. Many of the young parents that we work with do not have the support of their own families, so they're living on their own, trying to make ends meet. We know that if you're a teen while in school still, you have less than a fifty percent chance of graduating from high school if you're a girl, and compare, our males, our young fathers compared to their peers, have a thirty percent lower likelihood of graduating from high school. So, generations ahead, we really work to try to change that statistics that we, because we know that education can be a huge difference-maker in the ongoing sort of success of their stability and ability to raise their children. Teen parents are much more likely to live in poverty. They face mental health issues, and I know that this county board has done a lot around mental health issues and supporting different endeavors in our community. We applaud that and thank you for that work. The babies of teen parents also face problems. They face healthcare issues. They face health issues themselves. They tend to be born at lower birth weights than their older peers that have births, that give birth, and they tend to enter school lagging behind developmentally and also educationally. But we believe that by empowering young parents at generations ahead, we can help them become the best people and the strongest families that they can be. And so, for that, we thank you both for the proclamation, but also for the funding that you supported through the ARPA dollars.
Time's up. Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you. If I can just introduce also Lauren Branstadter with our office and Mike Opper, who's our most recent hire through the ARPA dollars with our Fatherhood Advocate program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Don't be shy.
Good morning. I'm Sue Coffin. I live in Grand Traverse County. I'm super nervous, so I apologize. I'm going to read. I'm here today to speak about animal abuse and neglect. There was a recent case in the fall of 2024 when three dogs were brought into the care of the Grand Traverse Animal Control. One of the dogs, who was named Mighty Mac by those who took care of him at the Cherryland Humane Society, was found to be emaciated. After months of rehabilitation, this dog was ultimately euthanized due to failure to thrive and declining quality of life. Unfortunately, the prosecutor's office determined that there was insufficient evidence to press charges against the couple for which Mighty Mac resided with. Michigan Penal Code Act 328 of nineteen thirty-one specifically states that adequate care must be provided for animals. This includes sufficient food, water, shelter, medical care in order to maintain an animal in a state of good health. The Penal Code further states that the definition of good health means freedom from disease and illness and in a condition of proper body weight for the age and species. Clearly, Mighty Mac was not found to be in good health as defined by the Penal Code. The couple that was responsible for providing minimal basic care requirements did not receive imprisonment, a fine, or community service. What they did receive was a free pass. This sends a message to these cowards and others that animal abuse is acceptable in our community. According to the FBI's website, animal abuse is predictive or coexists with violence towards humans, including domestic partners, children, and the elderly. Animal cruelty is a predictor of violent crimes, including rape, murder, assault, domestic violence, and child sexual assault. Children exposed to this kind of violence are at higher risk for perpetrating similar acts due to being desensitized to violence, and they may believe violence is an acceptable way to resolve conflict. Animal abuse is not only an animal welfare issue, it's a human welfare issue. I implore you as county commissioners to enact local ordinances to protect animals and humans alike, also to work with the prosecutor's office to ensure that cowardly individuals are punished to the fullest extent of the law. Thank you for your time and effort on this matter.
Thank you very much for speaking today.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Applause is not appropriate in a business meeting.
I disagree. So, last call. Once, twice?
Hi, good morning, everybody. I don't have anything written down, which is probably not a great idea. Sue's Melissa, last name Veezy, Veezer Victor. I'm here also in regards to a discussion about the ongoing investigations into animal abuse in Grand Traverse County and its lack of action. I think pretty much everybody here should agree that animals should not be abused. I think everybody here also should agree that people should be following and respecting the laws, and when they're not, they should be punished, which doesn't seem to be the case. Even if it was the case, the laws that we have in Grand Traverse County are very slight compared to other places, especially in northern Michigan. So, we intend on helping research and promote to increase the county regulations and laws surrounding animal abuse. I think that's all.
You don't have to use up the whole three minutes.
Okay. I mean, because I can keep going. I can start telling jokes. It's, you know, I'm funny.
Perhaps another time. Thank you for speaking. All right, now I mean it. Anyone else? Moving right along. Thank you, everyone, for being here today and those that spoke. I need, where are we? Approval of the agenda, please.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Sweet. Motion by Commissioner Hansel, second by Commissioner Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. Consent calendar. Bonnie, if you please. Sorry about that. That was a little quick for you.
I was ready. The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. A, receive. Number one, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority, March twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Number two, Department of Health and Human Services Pavilions Board, March and April twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Number three, Board of Public Works, March twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Number four, Traverse Area District Library, March twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Number five, Road Commission meeting minutes. Number six, Road Commission Weekly Updates. Number seven, Traverse City Cherry Capital Airport Letter. Number eight, ARPA Status Report. Number nine, Forever Camp Graylick Fund Update. B, approvals. Number one, Proclamation of May as Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month. Number two, Sheriff's Office Proclamations. Number three, Facilities Management Van Purchase Request. Number four, Receipt of Grant Dollars at Health Department to be partnered with Northern Michigan Community Health Innovation Region. Number five, Health Department, Environmental Health Workspace Update within Public Service Building. Number six, Healthy Future Services Agreement Contract Renewal, Amendment Number Twenty-One. Number seven, ARPA Funding Reimbursement Requests. Number eight, February twenty twenty-five Claims Approval. Number nine, March twenty twenty-five Claims Approval. Number ten, Health Department, Grand Traverse County Animal Control Two Percent Grant Application. Number eleven, Two Percent Grant Application Kate Peters Memorial Fund Girls Golf Outing. Number twelve, Two Percent Grant Application Grand Traverse Conservation District. Number thirteen, Two Percent Grant Application Northern Michigan Mountain Bike Association Vasa Bike Park. Number fourteen, Two Percent Funding Application Support Skilled Labor Training. Number fifteen, Prosecutor's Office Tribal Council Allocation of Two Percent Funds Application. Number sixteen, Friend of the Court Tribal Council Allocation of Two Percent Funds Application. Number seventeen, Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Office Two Percent Grant Application. Number eighteen, Goodwill of Northern Michigan Two Percent Grant Application. Number nineteen, Two Percent Grant Recycle a Bicycle.
Thank you. Anyone like to pull anything off the consent calendar? Commissioner Nelson?
I'd like to pull A three and B two. A three and B two.
Anyone else? I know you do, TJ. What's your response?
I'd like to pull off B three, please.
TJ?
A1.
Alrighty. Looking for a motion. Approve?
Move to approve with the exceptions of A1, A3, B2, and B3.
Fantastic. Sweet. Motion by Hansel, approve with the exceptions stated. Second by McAllister. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call vote. My apologies, everyone. Roll call vote, please.
Hansel?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
Most carries. Thank you, everyone. All right. Mr. Watkins. Road Commission update. Thank you for waiting this morning, sir.
Good morning. Dan Watkins, Grand Traverse County Road Commission Manager. I thought I'd start off today with meetings I attended here the last month. Was at the Long Lake, Whitewater, East Bay, and Garfield Township meetings. Township meetings that I had with individual township supervisors, talk about road projects, features of their township, was Mayfield, Garfield, Long Lake, and Whitewater. Had several bids come back in, which is great for us. Were able to start moving forward here on projects. Our bids came in for chip seal, our wedging. Our traffic counts came in. I think I talked about that last time that we're going out for traffic counts for then Teyer County to get that approved, and they're gonna start moving forward on that. I was actually surprised how quickly they're gonna be able to do that. It's about a three-month project, so they're hoping to start here shortly, and by the end of August, we should have counts on all of our local roads. So that'll be great. It'll be the first time we've done that. Also had some in-house trainings here recently. We had a safety day. We got everybody at the Road Commission CPR certified. We did first aid, and we did traffic control with coming up with all the upcoming work we have and influx of people. We wanted to make sure that everybody was up to date and certified in traffic control. So we did that one as well. Another one we did was, it's an OSHA-level class, and we did the first level last year. We did the second level this year of chainsaws. And this one, they did more work with like hung-up trees and different issues. So out of the 83 counties, the biggest injury report out of all the workers is trees. So that's the biggest thing that we found dangerous. So we wanted to get everybody with, so now all of our guys are OSHA 1 and OSHA 2 certified. Once you're OSHA 2 certified, you can go for a certification for storm cleanup. Storm cleanup is the most dangerous that they find. So we're hoping to be able to do that now. So a couple of really great trainings. Frost laws came off, 415, so that was great news. Luckily, our shop was ready to go. They had all of our semi-trucks, our trailers, our mowers, ready to go. So we hit the ground running. The biggest thing that we've been working on right now out of the gate is the high ridge, and that's where I've talked about where the dirt and soil builds up above, the asphalt we come through, we try to get that so that water runs off. Again, that water's our enemy for keeping those roads in good shape. And with the roads being, you know, a million dollars a mile to replace, it's everything we can do to save our road system right now. So that's what we're out there working on. Couple other updates. I know one commissioner that represents Long Lakes, I'm probably pretty happy about this one. Road safety audit for Cedar Run and Gray Road. That's gonna start May 18th and 19th. So what they're gonna do is they'll come in, they'll do a nighttime study, and they'll also do a daytime study, and then they'll come back and they'll come up with what their best recommendation is for the work there, what we should do with that intersection. So that's something that we applied for last year, those road safety audits. We just applied again this year, and this year, we applied for this one last year, we didn't receive anything, but we're hopeful this year, you know, we've came back with another plan. We kind of wrote it a little differently this year, and that straight road in Long Lake there, kind of that Moomers intersection. So we're hoping to have this same study done next year. What we hope that comes out of that is we can get some funding, some grants, and then hopefully we can do something with those intersections and projects. So. The other thing that we attended, almost forgot about that one. Out on Ramsey Road, there's a bridge that collapsed out there, and we've been working with the CRA to get that replaced. That is moving forward, and it looks like they're gonna secure some funding. We're looking at next year to get that bridge up and running. So that's all I had for today. As always, free for any questions, or if anybody has anything, please email, call, stop by, more than happy to answer anything that I can.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes, thank you. Could you give us an update? Obviously MS4 will be here in a blink of an eye. I believe it's an August application date. It looked to me from the training that, I believe you had some staff at, that Road Commission is gonna be, Road Commission and the city are obviously the big impacted entities in our jurisdiction. What is the Road Commission's plan? Who are you working with? What's the strategy to meet those deadlines?
Yeah, definitely. Actually, today, I think they're doing, maybe right now, they're doing an interview. Our Drain Commissioner and the city are involved, and they're interviewing different companies to come through. I think OHM is one. And we're planning on partnering with the city and with the county and trying to get a county-wide, if we can get somebody to kind of be the spearhead for us and get an overall plan. So we're working with them. So hopefully, something comes out of these meetings. I know they're trying to choose someone here very quickly, and then we can all start to move forward together.
Hey, Dan. Could you tell us what's going on out of Green Lake? You guys have worked on Uker, Hamlin Road, and widening the roads and doing stuff on 31. Can you give us kind of a timeframe of what you're doing and how long it's gonna take?
Yeah, definitely what's going out there is that's actually, it's really good for the county. The state is putting in the new roundabout and interlock in next year. In order to do that, they're gonna shut that down. They're gonna do a full detour. So what they're doing is that's gonna be the detour route, and they're out there right now widening the shoulders, they're gonna do some overlays, they're gonna improve those roads for us, because they're gonna be sending all that traffic. But what's great for us is when they do these kinds of repairs, these could be 10- to 20-year repairs on our roads. So they'll be doing those throughout the summer, and then, you know, next year, we'll see an increased traffic volume there. They'll get the roundabout done, and then they'll go back to just being a normal local road, but they'll be improved.
So are you gonna restrict 31 this summer, or it'll be just next summer?
I believe it's next summer. I think there is gonna be a small restriction from the state. There's a bridge there that I think they're gonna do a little bit of work. I understand there's just kind of a big bump there that everybody hits. I think there might be a little restriction during that time, but for the most part, I don't think there's gonna be a lot this year. The big one's gonna be next year.
Thanks.
Commissioner Spence?
Yeah, thanks, Dan. I wanted to bring up the road safety audit on Gray Road and Long Lake Road coming up on Sunday, May 18th at night, and then on Monday, May 19th, that's gonna be a daytime study. Just from my own personal experience using that intersection between 8:45 and 9:00 a.m., I think it's really critical to make sure that the, whoever's being contracted to do that road safety audit is there during that time. Is there any way to make sure that they're there?
Yeah, definitely. They're gonna have a kickoff meeting, and they're actually gonna ask us what we think like most important times are, what we're seeing with that intersection, and we can definitely relay that message.
So between 8:45 and 9:00 a.m., and a buffer on both sides is really critical. I mean that in a serious way. Yeah, thank you so much.
Definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm excited to see what they come up with for that intersection.
Me too. Yeah, thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Watkins? Commissioner Morris?
No, I just wanted to say you're my favorite person today.
Absolutely.
You need to step it up.
So last week, Dan and his crew were at the MTA Local Townships meeting hosted by Long Lake, and kudos to your crew, Dan. I thought that was a fantastic. Commissioner Spence, under Sheriff Fules, were in the meeting as well, but as were many people, but your crew and your staff really did a very nice presentation, and I think the video of the, what is it calling? The ditch?
The high ridging that we're doing.
The high ridging has 100-plus thousand views. It was very interesting to watch. High ridging, it's a thing, but I wanted to thank you for the presentation. It was fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions, concerns for Mr. Watkins? As always, thank you, Mr. Watkins.
All right, thank you. Hope everybody has a great day.
You.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to items removed from the consent calendar, consent calendar? Excuse me. A1?
That's me. I read with concern that the finance, the chief financial officer for Northern Lakes is anticipating a possibility of a $12 million overspend by the new fiscal year at CMH. Considering it's already May, I'm not sure when the fiscal year comes, but that is a big hole. And I would like to hear from the administrator at CMH what caused it, what the plan is to address it, and what services in our community are gonna be cut as a result of over 10% budget reduction at that organization.
So $12 million is just over 10%?
I believe they have a $90 million more or less annual budget. Is that about?
Right about, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So we have asked the interim CEO to present us with a plan, like ASAP, and we are awaiting that plan. So it's in the works.
I think this board needs to hear that, as well as how we got a $12 million overspend and what services the board agrees. So I don't mind waiting for your board to receive that, but I would say this is a very high priority for this community. We've invested a huge, the biggest chunk of our ARPA dollars went into mental health. This is a slash in services at the organization that provides those critical needs. So I'm gonna make a motion that we invite the interim CEO to present a plan, a cause, and a description of the services that are going to be impacted by the overspend.
And I'll support that. Do you have a date attached to it?
I mean, I do think it's fair for the CMH board to get that first, so I would give them 60 days. I assume that's time.
I have an agenda-setting meeting today at 1:00, and I will make that known.
Commissioner Hansel?
Historically, when Northern Lakes Community Mental Health has had financial struggles, one of the first things they pull is support from our jails, from all six counties. So I would like to keep a close eye on the support for mental health in our jail.
Can we take a friendly amendment to have him come by the end of June? I don't want to wait 60 days.
That's fine. Is that, Penny, is that reasonable? You'll have at least one meeting by the end of June to have received that.
Sure.
So that's a motion by Andrews, support by Commissioner Nelson, that we have the interim CEO of Northern Lakes CMH report to us within 60 days?
No, by the end of June.
Excuse me, by the end of June? Did I get that succinctly?
We've got friendly amendment accepted as well.
Agreed.
All right. Friendly amendment made and accepted by Commissioner Nelson.
May I add just a little context?
Absolutely.
So a week and a half ago, we had a dispute resolution committee based basically all six counties, with the exception of Westford County, were represented, each by their administrator and deputy administrator Forsyth are on that committee. We tried to, you know, have this discussion with Brian Martinez and Eric Kurtz. They are not prepared to give us any information. So the numbers that you're stating are correct, and they're troubling. We know that they have a current budget deficit of $2.5 million that they're going to have to be addressing relatively quickly, and we meet again next Monday in Crawford County to discuss this again with Brian and Eric, and I will certainly share this information with them that they will be here by the end of June.
Thank you.
And it's not just Grand Traverse County. All counties are singing the same song, which is a good thing. That's not always been the case, so we're unified.
Fantastic. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. So we're gonna move on to A3.
Okay, I pulled A3 solely for the.
Sorry, we need to receive and file A1.
Can we receive and file A1?
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Motion to receive and file the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority, March 2025 meeting minutes. Second.
All right. Motion to receive and file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie. My apologies, everyone. Commissioner Nelson, please.
Okay, sorry. I pulled A3 solely for the reasons that Noah Carburg, our new director of DPW, could introduce himself, maybe give us your 30-second elevator speech of who we are and why you've got cool socks on.
Everyone's looking at his socks.
I know. They're cool.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson, and thank you, Administrator Alger. And thank you for noticing the socks. It's my not to fashion. So my name is Noah Carburg. I'm the new director of Public Works. I've been in this position for all of eight days, so I'm gonna reserve any major pronouncements or judgments on my department and the county until I learn more. I like to think of myself as a Uper with a very brief 17-year detour to Nantuck in Massachusetts. That's where I'm coming from most recently. All I can say right now is that I look forward to working with everyone here with the Board of Public Works, and in addition to being a leader for my department, being a resource for the county. So, thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome.
I was gonna pull this item, so I just wanted to ask a question, and this may be for, I'm sorry, I didn't.
You may want to stay back up. You might.
Carburg.
With a C or a K?
K.
He almost got away.
Almost. You gotta be faster than that, Noah.
We just wanted to see your socks again.
Thank you. With a K.
So, and I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Carburg or for Commissioner Nelson, but I see that on the agenda, on the minutes, under item 8A, it's page four of eight or five of nine, the board has had an unfinished business item for over a year to request BPW counsel to provide an outline of the viability of a water and sewer authority to include the pros and cons of said structure, and then I see it looks like the board is in the process of potentially retaining or seeking counsel, going through the personnel process, a couple items below, or the personnel committee. So my question is, given that this is the board that creates a board of public works, and I anticipate would create a authority, should one be created, or should the board of public works be converted into an authority, that this board should get a memo from our counsel, and we shouldn't wait a year for it, and it should provide the same outline of pros and cons of that structure.
Would you like me to handle that, Noah, since you're eight days, not a year?
I would actually like to make the motion that we ask Matt Norford, our attorney of counsel, to provide that for us, so that we therefore have the privilege of, that goes along with that memo. So that's a motion.
Sorry, I have.
Second.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Andrews. Hold on a second. A second by Walter. Commissioner Nelson, have your hand up, please.
So for discussion on that, I think you accurately described it. It has been a loose discussion brought up. There has been more rumblings lately about the possibility of exploring an authority. It has not been officially undertaken at this point. There's been a lot of moving pieces there at that organization. As evidence, we have a new director, and we lost a director, so, yeah, it's not like it's coming around the pike or anything imminent. So I will keep this board updated as that progresses, but I would say it's in the thinking about stage and asking questions at this point.
Fantastic.
I don't think there's any hurry.
He can help you out with that if this motion passes. Any more discussion?
I'm just trying to understand, so over a year ago, the motion was made to request your counsel to provide that information, but you haven't gotten it yet?
Yeah, that's a whole nother, the council issue has been, there's a RPL for a new counsel at that board.
Okay. Lot of moving parts and people.
Yeah, and being in flux on a director has also stalled certain things that didn't need to be. It was just keeping the stuff that's flowing through the tubes from only going where it's supposed to go. That was the priority.
That's a good priority.
Fantastic. Well, welcome aboard. We're looking forward to working with you. So we have a motion on the table, or on the floor, rather.
Could you repeat the motion? I'm sorry.
The motion is to request our, the Board of Commissioners counsel to provide an outline on the viability of a water and sewer authority to include the pros and cons of said structure.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, most carries. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Noah.
All right, so we are on B2. I believe that's you, Darrell.
Yep, I pulled that. Under Sheriff is in the audience.
Did we receive and file that one?
Nope, my apologies.
Motion to receive and file the.
It's not personal, Darrell, I swear to God.
I know, I should have realized it, too.
We have a motion to receive and file by Commissioner Andrews. Do we have a second? Commissioner Flynn, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bonnie. Again, Commissioner Nelson.
Under Sheriff is in the audience. There's a proclamation, I thought, and Mr. Under Sheriff would like to announce that, and then we can hear from him.
Good morning, everyone. Randy Fueles, Grand Travers County Sheriff, Under Sheriff. And we've actually got two proclamations. Did you want me to read both of them, or just talk about them briefly?
I don't know if it's necessary to read them. They're in the packet, but give us the highlights.
I think what, on behalf of Sheriff Shay and I, we both just wanted to, and we appreciate the proclamation being considered here today. It's both for the Law Enforcement Officers Week and Corrections Officer and Employees Week. They both take part in May of each year, and each year we come to the board asking for that proclamation and that acknowledgement of those two weeks. This will be, basically, my understanding is that we wouldn't be coming back every year if this is accepted today, but we just want to make sure that the law enforcement officers and corrections officers get recognized, because we know that the sacrifices that they all make, our jobs are different than a lot of people's jobs. When people sign up for these types of jobs, they're committing to weekends, they're committing to holidays away from families, they're committing to getting called at the middle of the night to come in and work. So there are so many different things that I could go on and on about that we know our police officers and corrections officers have to do for their jobs, and we just want to really acknowledge that and promote that as well, so that's why we're in front of you here today. So we appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, Under Sheriff Fueles. Any more comments, questions, concerns for the Under Sheriff?
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
I noticed that this, these proclamations are proposed to be perpetual or to continue in perpetuity, whereas typically our proclamations are for a particular year, and I just wanted what the rationale for that is, and then also just to make sure our council doesn't have a concern with us taking such action in perpetuity. It's not typically how we do these proclamations.
That, I don't know. I know that we had talked just about not having, not coming every year for this, which I think we are willing to do, but I believe there were some conversations that the sheriff had behind the scenes that I wasn't at to do it this way, so.
Matt, can you give us an opinion on that?
There's no legal impediment to having a proclamation that has ongoing effect.
Thank you.
And this is the same week every year?
And it's around a particular date each year?
Yes, it is, yes.
And then, second, just a formatting question. It seems also a little unusual to have the chair of the board sign on the insignia for the sheriff's department. Typically, our sheriff signs letters that are on sheriff's, on, I'm sorry, our chair signs letters and resolutions on county letterhead, not sheriff letterhead. So I'm just not sure if that was an oversight or if that was.
We're paying for it.
It's, so it's a matter of, Under Sheriff, do you mind if we take your, this proclamation and put it on administrative letterhead?
We would be totally fine with that.
Great.
With that, I'll make the motion that we approve the resolutions, the resolution as presented.
Second.
I think it's approved. Aren't we on B?
Yep, it's approved. So, motion by Andrews, support by Commissioner McAllister to approve our resolution as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The only thing with doing the one in perpetuity is, are we having discussion? Is that we don't get to have you come every year to be able to recognize you and your team, so.
That doesn't mean you won't show up.
I get, you know, the idea of, I will, of course, honor you and your team in perpetuity, but it is nice to be able to talk about it and recognize it and have an annual, at least, recognition. So even though we are approving this in perpetuity, can we at least get it on the calendar to be recognized annually?
Hundred percent. I agree, hundred percent.
And you may or may not come, but it would be great.
So a friendly amendment for him to show up?
I will certainly pass this line to the sheriff, too, and will tell you that we will come back in May of every year to, even if it's a public comment, to express our thoughts on this matter as well.
You have to come in perpetuity.
I appreciate it. I will, okay. Get that in the minutes.
Any more for the Under Sheriff?
Probably enough for one day.
Yeah, probably. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate that.
You've signed up for a long duty.
All right, so we're going to move on. Receiving file.
We did not vote, though. We just had discussion.
No, we voted.
We voted to approve the resolution, not to receive and file it.
That's correct.
Move to receiving file.
Did we vote?
We did not vote. We moved, and then we had discussion.
No, it was, this isn't a receiving file, this is an approval. It was moved and approved.
We did approve it, because I said, "All those in favor say aye," and everybody said aye, and it's been approved, because that was the language. So we're moving on. B3.
Good job, Chair.
Let's just, use the name.
So I asked that B3 be pulled because it's a purchase of a transit van or cargo van for the county. And as someone who supports regional and local businesses, because I think that there's a lot of good, positive spillover effects, I'm curious, because we're buying one van, is it possible to break with that contract that we have with these three dealerships and buy a vehicle, like when it's one vehicle from a local or regional dealership, instead of buying one from this dealership in a while, so?
Sure. So thank you for the question. John Chase, Director of Parks and Facilities for Grand Travers County. We did investigate local operations, Fox Ford and operation in Calcasas as well. This particular entity is one of three municipal dealers that offered preferred pricing for us, and the pricing difference was significantly different for local dealers.
Commissioner Spence, we do have a policy in place that prefers local vendors, that preference is a 5% cost over of any of the lower bids. The county certainly has the ability to change that policy to something that they would prefer to have, but I think in the interest of spending taxpayer dollars wisely, we've entered into this system with our current policy in our state of Michigan pricing, and it's worked out to our advantage, but that does not mean that we can't increase that percentage for local preference.
Thank you. Oh, I had just brought this up as a discussion point, just for moving forward, and I didn't expect any actions to be taken on it, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Will the old van be sold? And does it have a salvage value? And it looks like this is almost $10,000 more than we expected. Is there some salvage value that will offset some of that additional cost?
Yes, there is definitely salvage value. We just did not list that one as surplus yet. We'll come back and list that one as surplus after we've received a new one.
Any sense of surplus value?
It's hard to say, but we've seen surprising surplus value from some of the vehicles that we've sold of late, so I would think that we would get at least that difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Nelson?
Move to approve the purchase of the 2025 Ford Transit 150 all-wheel-drive cargo van from Lung Hammer Ford.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Nelson, a second by Commissioner Andrews to approve purchase as presented. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. Departmental items, 10A.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Bott has prepared a financial report that he could walk you through.
So we'll start on page 321. My memo basically is just summarizing that this is for the general fund. It's through March 31 of 2025, so the first three months of our fiscal year, which does line up with the calendar year. The first two reports are run right from our MyGTC accounting system ERP, starting with the general fund revenue budget status report on page 322. That's a two-page report. That's what most of the departments will see when they go in and select their, either a cost center or a fund. It will give the department totals and some budget information, as well as where they're at year-to-date. I started with the revenue. It's called GTC Revenue Budget Status by Fund. That's on page 322 and 323. Following that, then, is the expenditure report. It's called the GTC Expenditure Budget Status by Fund. And again, this is only for the general fund for the first three months of 2025. And then, you know, because that's very specific, it doesn't really give you a reference. So what I did then was I took the PDF and created, for both the revenue report and the expenditure report, a spreadsheet that included some historical information. So starting on page 327 is the revenue that summarized in the, you know, the written or the PDF reports, with 2024 total revenue in the first column, and then the first three months or a three-month look compared to, obviously, the prior fiscal year. And then for any variance, plus or minus $50,000, I put a note explaining what those differences were. It's extremely, it would be almost impossible in this type of a setting to go through each revenue line item or expenditure line item to explain differences. No two fiscal years are the same. You know, you would hope and expect that revenue would come in with the same pattern or consistency or frequency, but that does not happen. The same is true with the expenditure side of the budget. But I did want to provide that comparison, so you could see where our revenues through three months in our main operating fund, how that compares with the prior year. I did that for both revenues and expenditures, and this is at the cost center or department level in both reports. Just looking at the revenue, one of the big increases, it's a little over $100,000, the revenue sharing payments, at least the first one that we received for 2025 from the state of Michigan is a little over $100,000 more than it was the same time a year ago. That's a scheduled increase in state revenue sharing, along with a change in how they're distributing those funds, so it's in line with what we budgeted, but we should always be able to explain those, you know, differences or variances. At this point in time, for the general fund, we've, you know, completed basically four months of our fiscal year. I'm not seeing any trend or any pattern that's causing me a concern. Obviously, on the revenue side, you know, if you look, I don't know if the percentages on the PDF, we're only at 4% to 5% in terms of revenue realization. That's not uncommon for the general fund, because the bulk of our revenue, 60%, is property tax. We don't start receiving that until July 1st. On the expenditure side, if you look at the PDF, it gives you a percentage at the bottom, year-to-date through the end of March, we're 21%. If you look at just the calendar year, you know, you would be at 25%. Payrolls don't quite line up that way, but we're also in line. No major concern, you know, from the revenue perspective or from an expenditure perspective at this point. And like I said, I did want to provide some brief comments explaining variances when we look at three months '25 versus three months 2024.
Any questions for Mr. Bott? Commissioner Walter?
Other than the variances, thank you for that. Is there anything in particular that jumps out at you that you want to tell us about?
You know, we're, I will say, and this is a good thing, in 2025, we have a better understanding of our software that we work with, so we're more current in our expenditures that we've recorded. In the prior year, 2024, we did not allocate the retirement expenses in the first quarter. This year, the year-to-date numbers do include that. So if you see on the expenditure report, some of the transfers, the transfers to the district court and circuit court are higher, that's because those transfers include those pension allocations. So, you know, we're able to, with more time, we've become better using our accounting software. We do have, I don't want to pick on anyone, the treasurer, we don't have our year-to-date interest revenues fully recorded. We are working with them to get that current. The interest revenues are higher than what we're showing through, they're just not recorded yet in the accounting system, so.
When do you anticipate getting?
Working with the treasurer to get things current is probably the biggest thing that we need to concentrate on.
Commissioner Nelson?
I just want to thank you for this report. I like it a lot. There's a lot of information in a pretty quick and easy review manner. It's a good snapshot, so, thank you.
You're welcome. I wanted to show the PDFs, because that's what the departments and the managers see. Even though this is kind of compressed to the department or cost center level, they're able to go into each of those departments and expand to see the revenue detail and the expenditure detail. So there's a lot of expansion. This is very compressed financial information, but this is what I used during the year to make sure that we're on track.
What I like is if I were to review this before the meeting and see something that I had a question about or concerned me, I could contact you, and I'm sure you could provide that information, but I don't need that for every department ahead of time.
We should absolutely be able to explain any number that's on this report. Sometimes it does take a little bit of digging, though, especially when you're trying to find out perhaps why it's more or less than the prior year. So it's not all available on the same screen. It does require you to look at those two different years, but it's easy to get into the detail and see what the differences are.
Commissioner Spence, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thanks. I thought, could you just go through the board of commissioners line item, just the one, on both the revenue budget and then the expenditure budget? I just don't understand what that all means.
So on the, so there is, or there are revenues that are budgeted for the Board of Commissioners. There are some room rental revenues that we receive that are accounted for. There's a, the largest revenue item is what's called an indirect cost recovery. We prepare a cost allocation plan, and based on that cost allocation plan, I'm able to charge some of the Board of Commissioners expenditures, your budget, your cost center, to federal grants and state grants, so we can recover that from an outsider external source. So that's the main revenue that's in that Board of Commissioners cost center. What you're seeing on these reports is just a total for the Board of Commissioners, and you're not seeing the detail. On the expenditure side, the primary expenses would be for your salaries and any benefits that you have earned as a county commissioner. There's some staff wages and benefits that are included. One of the, probably the bigger expenditures or the most significant within the budget is the contract services for our attorney, for other attorneys that you use, for some other services that we have. What I could do, if it would be helpful, is send you the detailed line items at some point, so you can see what's in those budgets. There are, on the revenue side, only two or three revenue accounts. On the expenditure side, there's probably 40 or 45 accounts that make up that total, primarily personnel, wages, benefits, some supplies, and contractual services. Lot of detail.
Thanks. That's interesting. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yeah, thank you. I'll echo Commissioner Nelson. I think this is a really valuable snapshot of where the budget is at the quarter so far. I do have a question. Where our expenditures are generally higher than 25%? It looks like mostly right, our expenditures in this general fund, our personnel, a quarter of the way into the year, we'd spend about a quarter for the most part, but it looks to me like corrections, interim services, and emergency management, and then there's a HR or Department of Human Services item where we are way over 25%, also extension. But the one at the Sheriff Corrections Interim Services, we're at 47%. corrections, interim services, we're at 47%. Could you just identify what is that, that item?
Well, the, that cost center is the cost center that we use for the boarding out of our inmates. I'm looking or thinking of the right one.
Yeah, I'm on, I think I'm, I'm using a different page number. I'm on page five of eight.
Okay.
GTC expenditure budget status by fund. It's two of three over on the right.
CC35200.
Department of Human Services.
It's CC35200, Sheriff Corrections Interim Services. And if you look at the far right, it's 47.76% spend year-to-date.
Yeah, the, the percentage is good, and I see what you're saying. I mean, that cost center, that's the cost center where we charge all of the boarding out for our inmates. Off the cuff, I'm not sure why we're at that level at this point. I'd have to look at that. I don't believe, I know we, my short answer would be, we must be boarding out more inmates than we had, had budgeted for, because we did have an understanding that we were doing 25 to 30 inmates a day. I don't know. It's not a, I'll look into it.
Would that cover the medical, or is that?
It does. When, when the counties invoice us for those costs, the invoice does include any medical expenses for those inmates. Let, let me look into that.
Okay.
Yes, that could potentially be a, a place where we're going to be over budget. I, I do know that we budgeted a little bit higher amount than we needed to for the medical contract in the corrections budget, CC35100. So if we're incurring more costs in 352, that would be the first place that I would look to cover that. I'll work with the sheriff, and we'll figure out what's going on there.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate this. I would like to have a quarterly report, if this isn't a burden on you to produce. I think this is a helpful quarterly snapshot. I don't know that you need a motion to that effect, but I do think this is a good check-in.
Great, I appreciate it.
Regarding the other one, which is further down, that's an annual appropriation. I think it's the $32,500 expenditure, Department of Human Services.
Yeah.
They, the state requires us to make that payment in the month of January, so it's, it's fully expended. There will be no additional expenditures in that cost center.
And then how about the emergency management? It looks like they're slightly above.
I'm going to have to sit down with Mr. Bird and see what's.
They have a new employee that didn't have in 2024.
We, we did have, they, they have one expenditure that's also an annual expenditure code red, a software that provides alerts through either phone messages or text. And I know we've incurred that cost in the first quarter, and that may be the reason that that percentage is over the 25%.
And then my last question is, what is the, the 48,000, sorry, under total encumbrances, there's just a single one at the county patrol for the sheriff? What does that mean to have an encumbrance at county patrol?
Great question. An encumbrance would be, in most cases, a purchase order.
Well, for.
Yeah, a purchase order, some commitment where, once the purchase order is submitted to administration and approved, it's out there to show the department or anyone who's reviewing and managing the budgets that you've, you've committed something, even though we haven't necessarily received an invoice or made that payment. It's, it's a claim against your budget balance, and you need to be aware of that when you're, with your future spending habits.
This is great. Pardon me. This is great, Mr. Bot. Is there any more questions about this? Definitely going to do a deep dive myself.
Sure makes for an easy read, though.
It does. This is wonderful. I appreciate the effort that you all put into this. Anything else? Thank you very much. We're going to move, so I'm going to do a quick straw poll. Want to take a break?
Yes.
All right, we're going to take a break. We'll see you back in 10 minutes.
I'm taking a break, but you guys aren't.
There you go. Well, in that case, I guess we're all taking one.
I do have a couple, I do want to do a motion before we get going.
That's what brought them back to Michigan?
Yeah, yes.
I think.
It's non-controversial.
Oh, it's even okay if it is? That's over here, right?
It's true, I just think it'll keep.
Fantastic, we're gonna come back to order now.
Use your mic.
Sorry, I should talk into my mic, Ashley, you're slipping.
Sorry. Well, I got reminded myself, so.
Oh, very good.
During the break, so I'm gonna try to do a better job.
All right, so.
But I.
Go ahead, please.
Before we move, I would like to follow up on comment that Vice Chair Andrews made about how great the report was from our Finance Director, and I think there's agreement that we'd love to see those quarterly, especially given the, with the new system and the world as it is and the shifting economics. So, it's helpful going into the budget cycle, so I'd like to make the motion that we continue to receive the quarterly financial updates from our Finance Director.
One second.
All right, Commissioner Andrews?
No.
Oh, well, I thought you were gonna say something. So, we have a motion for Commissioner Walter, and a second by Commissioner Anshel. Any more discussion?
I just wanted to ask Finance Director Bott if he sees any problems with that, or any, do you need any clarification on what the board is looking for?
No, that's very easy to do, and we will provide that information.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Maybe some color?
We'll work on it.
Bye, charts?
Oh, boy.
No bye, charts.
That was not in the original motion, we're just gonna start.
Just red and black, red and blacks.
Red and black is fine.
He's in the world of CFOs.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Fantastic, thank you, everyone.
I have another motion to make, related to something that Mr. Bott shared about some of the information not coming to us quite yet from the Treasurer, and we haven't heard from the Treasurer yet since he's been elected, and I would request a report from the Treasurer by the end of June.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Walter, with support from Commissioner Andrew, that we ask the Grand Travis County Treasurer to come and provide us a report by the end of June, any discussion?
Just to clarify, I believe that's an annual report that they typically provide with the look back on the prior year?
I believe that is correct.
We typically get that?
Yeah, he's been in office for a few months now.
He should have it, he should have it, no problem.
Okay, you want last year's report and?
Last year's report, yep.
Okay.
And anything else he wants to share, given the investment environment would be good.
I concur, all right, no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries, thank you. Okay, going, moving on to 10B, Mr. Leahy, Mr. Alger?
Yes, we have been asked to provide an update about animal control ordinances and what the county can and cannot do specifically through animal control, or a law enforcement investigation into cruelty to animals, or other animal-related complaints, so largely animal control sits within the Health Department currently, it has not always been that way, but it is that way currently, and Mr. Leahy and Mr. Wheat will be presenting to you animal control and Mr. Leahy.
All right. Good morning, still morning, Mike Leahy, Deputy Director at our Public Health Department. So, first, thank you for the support, we had four items on the consent calendar, and while I was prepared to give four presentations, I appreciate the opportunity to give one. So, going to speak on animal control here today, and Mr. Wheat is here to help if need be, so thank you to him for joining us, but as Administrator had articulated there, we were connected to be brought into the conversation, to just give a kind of an idea as to how we play a piece in the puzzle that is animal welfare in our community. So, I see, and I'll reference the Sheriff's Department here, undersheriff's team works very closely with us, as well as I see some representatives from the Humane Society, as well as some of their volunteers, I believe, so it's not just us, right, it takes a number of us to handle some of the easy cases, and then some of the more complex ones. So, to just kind of discuss the animal controls part in that trajectory, first, I'm referencing just the animal control state law authorities, so really where we, as an animal control program division, get our authorities from. So, you see, that's Public Act 339, the 1919 Dog Law, requires dogs older than six months to be licensed, to wear a collar with that license tag, leech requirements, as well as gives the authority to the animal control officer, our ordinance gives that authority to the Health Department Director, to enforce and issue citations that are adverse to the ordinance that we currently have. So, since 1919, hopefully, some additions have been made at the state level, really to protect domestic animals, so these laws do address such issues as animal cruelty and neglect, some of these issues, though, are not in our current ordinance, some of those updates, but those updates, too, are more criminal in nature, whereas our Animal Control Department addresses matters civilly, really. So, diving into our ordinance here in Grand Travis County, was last updated in October of '21, a majority of that was really just some formatting at that time, some subtle language, but really no substantial changes to the language of the ordinance, and I just wanted to kind of go over what that ordinance really entails, and when we see our animal control officers in the field, what are they enforcing? So, confinement of dogs, this is kind of the cliche one that you envision, animal control officer, those animal, dogs at large, strays, addressing loose dogs, or those off a premise, disposal of unclaimed dogs, so in Grand Travis County, unlicensed dogs have a four-day hold, whereas those that are licensed have a seven-day stray hold, once those stray holds are up, and those dogs have not been claimed, they do become property of the county at that point. So, that is where I'll speak a little bit in future slides, of just these partnerships that we have in the community, and how I think we do a pretty good job in the county of finding places for those animals, as well as establishment of payments and fees are within our ordinance, at the departmental level, as well as dog licensing. So, we took it a step further when our ordinance was drafted, four months and under are required, or four months and older, to have a dog license, in the county here, dog licenses are managed through our Treasurer's Office, so the issuing of those licenses, the collection of those fees, is a partnership between the Health Department, Animal Control, and then our Treasurer's Office, as well as all dogs must be vaccinated when they are receiving those licenses, so you begin to see a little bit of the tie-in there as well, with the Health Department, as in control for rabies and such disease. Also, we've managed the regulation of kennels, anyone wishing to operate a kennel in the county has to be permitted through our County Health Department, through the Animal Control Division. Additionally, some improvements at the state level have been made to legislation, really honing in on the authorities onto local jurisdictions, to address dogs that are running at large, strays, or otherwise off-premise, this is really one of our busiest items within the Animal Control Division in the county, just addressing dogs at large, strays, reuniting those dogs with their owners, or working with the Humane Society to really kind of get that dog into the system and move forward. Ordinance enforcement, really, it starts verbally in our community, so under the ordinance, a lot of it is education, educating, you know, our residents, a lot of that work is where we stay, our officers kind of flip in their hours, because, you know, someone comes home from work at five o'clock, realizes Fido's not in the house anymore, works with our Animal Control Officers, finds a dog education at that time, right? We really don't step into some more of those civil infractions, until we've had an opportunity to do education, and at that point, if our officers feel it's necessary to issue a civil infraction, then we step into that occasionally, and then fees are assessed, so we do reclaim fees for the reclaiming of an impounded dog, that's another one that it's difficult, right? So, under some circumstances, a community member may be struggling, right, maybe struggling to feed their animal, house their animal, to then charge them a fee to then reclaim their animal, sometimes just contributes to the problem. So, that's where our officers do a fantastic job of educating and making some decisions on, you know, because again, really, from our perspective, we want to educate and make sure that it doesn't happen again, rather than put that dog into our system because someone can't afford a $25 fee, or something of the nature, but when it is a reoccurring issue, our officers do make those calls and enforce that. Currently, the ordinance does not address a few things, so animal cruelty and neglect, those are not addressed in our local ordinance, they are addressed at the state level in Act 328 of 1931. In the county, when animal control is made aware of a circumstance in which neglect or cruelty is identified, or believed to have been identified, it is required that our officers work in coordination with the law enforcement, so our Sheriff's Department, or Travis City Police Department, to put a case together. Eventually, that investigation is ultimately turned over to the County Prosecuting Attorney Office, when law enforcement and animal control believe that there is enough to support a case under that state act. Other things that are not addressed in the ordinance, just helpful, because we get a ton of calls on them, but it's always good to provide education, dog bites on a premise, we can respond to, but within the ordinance have no enforcement, dogs left in hot vehicles, that is an item that is not enforced within our ordinance, dogs exhibiting aggressive or vicious behavior, and cats, livestock, and other domestic pets. So, while we appreciate the calls for a cow or a horse making, taking a Saturday stroll down the road, we can help return that animal, but it's really not something that we can So, how do we manage all of this work in the county? What are we currently doing? So, at our, at the Health Department, we have a team of three, consisting of two animal control officers and a supervisor. Each year, that team responds to roughly 3,000 phone calls requesting service, approximately 1,000 of those phone calls result in some level of field response into the community. Each year, 350 dogs are impounded, and less than 150 of those are reclaimed by owners. So, you can see where the partnerships come into play with the Humane Society, with relationships that we have through animal control, or, excuse me, and animal advocates, right, about fostering, extending the opportunity for these animals while a home is identified, so, and it happens, you know, we have animals that move through quickly, and we have some that are with us and with the Humane Society for quite some time, over a year in some cases. Animal control, so what we do do is write citations for dogs loose on premise, unlicensed dogged, or unlicensed kennels, issue notices to comply for warnings of animal neglect, rabies vaccination, adequate care, and required veterinary care. So, we do issue warnings when these items are identified in the community, but really with that animal neglect and abuse, some of that enforcement authority is not within our animal control officers and ordinance. What we're unable to do is investigate animal cruelty and neglect independently, we require that assistance with law enforcement, where we enforce dog-related complaints, and submit reports, cases, to the prosecuting attorney office, we cannot do that without law enforcement involvement. So, as I mentioned to start, we don't do all of this on our own, we have a ton of community partners and relationships to put all of this together, so we have community relationships with, for protecting all domestic animals, cats, dogs, and vehicles, all of those things, oftentimes when the animal control is seizing animals from a dilapidated structure, or an item issue in the community, it's not just dogs in the home, right, we'll find cats, and lizards, and all sorts of things that we work with then to rehome, but the ordinance really speaks to dogs. Public protection from aggressive and vicious animals, as I mentioned, a number of calls, we go out on that and do education on that, prompt and effective response to all complaints is a big item for us at the Animal Control Division, we have some rotating schedules with our officers, to ensure that there's someone available over the weekends to take those calls on Saturdays and Sundays, strong public relations is key for us, you know, educating, standing, talking with our community members, educating them on the, what the ordinance does, and how their phone calls to us, how they can help in certain areas, and then obviously assistance with returning animals to owners, or rehoming, we do, you know, roughly 250, 200 a year of rehoming animals. So, just a little backbone as to how we do that then, as well, so operating millage, so the animal control operates on an operating millage that was restored in 2022, for a period of six years through 2027, the voters of Grand Travis County approved that at .037 mills, in 2024, the revenue from the millage was just over a quarter of a million, 250,800. The operating expenses of the 2024 Animal Control Program were 408,960, so as you can see, we're a little underfunded at this time, and we're taking some steps to really identify what we can do for that in 2027 and beyond. One thing that played into some of those increases in '24 was we renewed a contract with Cherryland Humane Society for a period of three years through 2026, it was an old contract, it really had not been touched in quite some time, I spoke on that in front of this board, I believe it was in '23, we did, as the county feel it was necessary, to address that contract at that time, because you can see the critical need that that relationship has within our county, but we did see an increase from 37,000 to just around 649, or 64,000 in 2024, and we've built in roughly a 3% increase each year through 2026 into that contract language, so. And just kind of speaking on the partnerships, this is something that was recently done by our Animal Control Supervisor and law enforcement, about really putting a face to the program, face to the works, recognizing the work that's been done, and how it's not just one county department that addresses this, and this is a program through our Animal Control Department, that, through the Sheriff Department, and our Animal Control Officers, really kind of supporting some of these dogs that are county dogs at the time, who have not yet been given a second or third chance, and they're there to adopt, so just wanted to share that as well. So, with that, any questions or conversation?
Well, thank you very much for your report and in-depth, so before we get started, I want to, I'm gonna make a motion. So, clearly, if you haven't been, if you're on social media, and the newspaper and stuff, and these fine folks wearing their purple shirts, there seems to be concerns that somewhere somebody may have dropped the ball, and I don't know, so I'm gonna make the motion, we create an ad hoc committee, include myself and whoever else wants to volunteer, that we look at what Mike and the Health Department is doing, and we invite the Sheriff's Department, the Health Department, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, to come and help us out with that.
Support. Support.
All right, so, Commissioner Morris has got support for that motion, any discussion about that?
I'm happy to be on that.
Beautiful. You, too?
Sure, why not?
With a volunteer, kind of volunteered, Commissioner Morris, but Commissioner Walter volunteered.
Could you mention the council to be a part of that as well?
Which council?
Civil Council. Civil Council.
Or, I think we're gonna need an attorney at some point.
Yeah.
Right, well, we'll get to that when we get to that, but I did not initially.
Would you, those would be open meetings?
Of course.
Would, when we did the septic ad hoc, we invited Aspire North and Watershed to participate, would you consider including Cherryland?
Absolutely.
To have a representative, at least?
Absolutely.
Get direct notice of those meetings as well?
That's a very valid point, thank you, absolutely, so we'll include them as well. That clear as mud, Bonnie?
Mr. Chair, could you clarify?
No.
The members of your committee in the motion, so that the board can approve those?
Absolutely, so, I propose, I make the motion, we create an ad hoc committee to address animal control issues, if there are any, so, sorry, I'll take out my edits. Animal control issues in the county will include myself, Commissioner Walter, Commissioner Morris, and we will invite Sheriff's Office, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, the Health Department, and Cherryland Humane Society, to provide a person, if they will, to participate. We're gonna look at everything, we're gonna use the Mighty Mac, so, aside from the motion, we look at Mighty Mac, and it's like, I don't know the whole story, but that's a clear, good example, how I'm gonna look from the beginning to the end, and say, this is where we could have been better, and we have four or five partners in that group, and I think there's plenty of responsibility to go around, but it's not about laying blame, it's about doing a better job for the people and the people who own pets. You're welcome.
I think with, with.
Please hold your applause, please. That's all for you, Commissioner Walter.
Well, because there's so much discussion about the current ordinance and the state law, it would be helpful to have council there from the beginning.
Well, we are inviting the Prosecuting Attorney's Office there, she is an attorney.
It would be helpful to have council there from the beginning.
Fair enough, I will ask Mr. Norris for it.
Repeat.
One more, it's like talking to your kids, isn't it? One more time, Mom?
Mike, you mentioned, sorry, you mentioned community partners when you were explaining this PowerPoint presentation was being shown to us, is there anybody that we haven't included?
So, we have the Humane Society, we have a few other Humane Societies that we work with, Little Travis Bay, we have veterinary clinics that we work heavily with as well on some of these cases, right, so I would look at the Mighty Mac case, which I took a review through, a lot of times, some of these animal neglect cases are running through a vet, once the animal has been seized, right, and they're giving us their professional opinion on what needs to happen to the dog, whether it's treatment or care, or ultimately the unfortunate decision of maybe that dog needs to be euthanized just for the. unfortunate decision of maybe that dog needs to be euthanized just for the quality of life. So veterinary medicine would be, you know, I mean, they're playing a role in this, and ultimately, if it's a county dog at that time, we may be getting that bill, right? So that's also another really difficult part of this piece, is making that decision at that time. Now, other community partners often play a, a big role in this, right? So we, we all know of a few circumstances in which GoFundMe accounts, things like that, are created to support one of those animals. We do occasionally get donations through the department to support that, but unless Mr. Wheat has any other ideas.
I can speak to the partners a little more. Brent Wheat, Environmental Health Director, Grand Travis County. So, so some of the other partners, obviously Cherryland is a huge, we, we work with them every day. Through phone calls, our, our Animal Control Officers are up there multiple times a day, whether it's bringing in strays, working to adopt dogs out, that partnership is vital to what we do. They can't always help on the adoption side, because they also have full kennels. What we have seen since COVID is, you know, a lot of people picked up dogs during COVID because they couldn't leave their homes, and they were really looking for that, that partner to be with them. And after COVID ended, you know, times kind of were tough for them. And so we have brought in a lot of dogs since then. Our kennels are, we have 12 contracted kennels. Those typically run really close to the limits a lot of the time. In fact, we're actually full right now, completely full. Cherryland also has their own personal kennels that are full a lot of the times. So then, when we run into these instances where our kennels are full, their kennels are full, we reach out to other partners, such as Hands to the Rescue, Little Travers Bay. We work with them a lot to, to try and find homes for these dogs. We're always looking for, for fosters to work with us. Bay Area Pet Hospital offers us discounted rates for, for veterinary care. Dr. Pam is essential to what we do as well. When we bring in some of these dogs, they, they aren't always ready to adopt right away. Sometimes it's, they need to be fixed, they need to be vetted. And so this process is not an overnight venture, so that's why our kennels are full a lot. We, we have partners with Beacon Bay, I mean, she has done a great job with offering, you know, free training for some of these animals that need that, that help with that next step. So we have a lot of partners in our community that are great resources for us, so.
I guess to answer the question, I would, if, consider a veterinary partner, right? That, and again, meetings would be open too, right? So even just going back to our septic regulation, public comment, some of these partners, we, we would very much be happy to invite to give their perspective on it.
Well, correct. Mr. Hansel?
Yeah, I'm just looking at our ordinance, and I'm, we've got a three-page ordinance, and I remember working with Deputy Administrator Forsyth back a few years ago to update that, because at the time, it was out of compliance with some state laws. But I think it's, it's come around again, and it's time to look at that ordinance again, maybe. I'm looking at Monroe County's ordinance, it's 25 pages, like, all encompassing, all animals, lots of definitions, and, and I don't know, you know, I'm, less is more, I'm that kind of person, but I also can see, like, we're probably missing some stuff, so hopefully the committee can recommend or, or suggest that staff bring some recommendations to updating the ordinance, getting a little more clear, and, and maybe expanding to other animals other than just dogs, and, you know, all the, all the things we have in our community. Monroe County's about 150,000, we're around 100,000, we're headed to 150,000. So that's the kind of county we should probably look to for how they're doing some things once in a while.
Totally noted. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a, just a comment, yeah, Rob, you're absolutely right. When we, when we did the ordinance cleanup project, it was really to get our ordinances to comply with current laws, as well as get them in a uniform style, format. But, but we did talk internally about doing a deeper dive into the Animal Control ordinance, and, and that would have been a future phase to, to really update the regulations. So, yeah, totally agree, that needs to be done.
Fantastic. So we got a motion. Oh, Commissioner Nelson, please.
One more comment. I just, I, I've heard a lot of criticism of the Prosecuting Attorney's Office on this, and I, I, I think we should state that this is not, we're not saying that there was a failure on the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. They sometimes, you know, their hands are tied, they have to follow the law, and, and maybe what we're talking about here will help them in the future, but I, I, I don't think the prosecuting attorney wants to allow animal abuse and neglect to occur in the county, and, but they also have constraints and sometimes are unable to charge.
I agree, and that's, this is not a witch hunt by any stretch of the imagination. This is just about, this is an opportunity for us to go, hey, when we're busy building a jail, when we're busy doing this, hey, this is a concern, maybe we can do better. You know, not to get too far in the soapbox, but I realize that people care about animals. The problem with that is, in the state of Michigan, animals are property. So in the taking care of that property, where does the prop, where does an animal's rights stop and a personal property rights start, which is constitutionally guaranteed? So I understand that people are looking for a silver bullet, or a magic bullet, excuse me, that may not be the case, but I think we could do better, and that's what we're going to do, is we're going to look at it to try to do better. We're not blaming, we're not assessing blame to anybody. That's, that's not even what we're going to be talking about. So we'll wrap that up. Any further comments? Sweet. I got a clear on the motion? Sweet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Mr. Lee, Mr. Wheat.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
10C Steering Committee. We'll give them a second.
Where's everybody going?
Food trucks here. Right? Food trucks here, right? Scoops? All right.
This one's about humans.
So do you want to start with this, Nate, or you want me to? Steering Committee.
Cool, right ahead.
All right. So we talked about, we had a prior resolution we approved, start the process for constructing a new jail. Part of the approval resolution was a steering committee, and I can make the motion as such, that I envision a steering committee to have an executive committee in it, made up of myself, Commissioner Andrews, Sheriff Shay, Judge Hamlin, and Administrator Alger, to oversee a steering committee that we made up of other commissioners, as well as members of the public and people that are stakeholders. We have concerns that we're trying to set this up in such a way that we do not do any violation of an Open Meetings Act, things like that. People have reached out, not only on this board, but also in the public, and we want to have as many people buy in as possible, or this is not going to go anywhere. So I guess that's my motion. CJ?
Are you looking for volunteers?
Always.
I'll second the motion, and then I'll just say that in the memo that's in the packet, the administration has reached out to the National Institute of Corrections, which is a national, a federal organization, federal governmental organization that provides technical support for communities who are embarking on the construction of a new jail. That's what, or, or modifications or updates or whatever. That is their, their sole purpose as an organization. So we have been assigned a representative, Michael Jackson. We will not stop laughing about that, I'm sure, but.
There's a glove, it's odd.
But, Ms., the, my perspective is that the sooner we bring in Mr. Jackson to help us figure out what the subcommittees should be, and then form leaders of subcommittees so that we are, but, but I think we need to get input into what those look like. We shouldn't, we, we don't need to invent a wheel where this is being done all over the country, all over the world, obviously. So the idea is to just get the committee to meet with Mr. Jackson, to come up with some, some starting points, and then come back to the board with some more information.
So I'm confused on the motion, because the item talks about a steering committee, but really, the motion is just about recommending the establishment of an executive committee?
Part of the steering committee, what my envision, my vision of this is going to be two parts, to get as many people on as possible without violating the Open Meetings Act. So there are principal partners in this, and then there is going to be community support, as well as support from fellow commissioners on the board, as well as insight. We have people that have much, on this board alone, could probably hash it all out, but that's my concern. So the executive committee is going to be ones where we're going to be talking with Michael Jackson. We're going to be setting these things up. We're going to be finding all these partners and setting up the committee of the whole, if you will. Forgive my loose use of the vernacular.
So I would like to add an edit to this, if possible, just to make sure.
Don't please do.
That, so I did, at your request, I did reach out to Mr. North Shore and ask the question, you know, does this executive committee structure, would that be subject to OMA? He believes that it likely will be subject to OMA, so we may want to visit with him after, after this meeting and the establishing of the committee, just so we understand what rights and responsibilities we have.
So again, for clarification, right now, the motion is just to establish this executive committee?
Correct. I'm sorry, went a long way around the bar, and my apologies.
Mr. Chairman, can we clarify, you're wanting to appoint a committee that is not holding open meetings?
No, they are holding open meetings. So here's the thing, if we're all going to be on the steering committee, or you got five commissioners that are, sorry, thank you. If we have five commissioners that are on a steering committee for the jail, because there's going to be input, then we're going to be, you know, breaking the rules. And so I don't want to do that.
So.
All the meetings are going to be open meetings.
Yeah.
Just as, we're just forwarding the executive committee to form the rest of the steering committee, but it's all open meetings.
So there, there's no possibility of a OMA violation, no matter how many commissioners are on it, because it's an open meeting?
Hopefully. But it's not a committee, it's a steering committee, it's not a committee at all.
But any body created by a vote of this board is subject to.
Absolutely.
The OMA has to hold open meetings. All deliberations of this board and that body both have to be held in an open meeting, so there's no way to violate, depending, I'm not volunteering, I'm just saying, if you, if you want a committee that is not under OMA, you simply instruct the administrator, form a committee, get a task done.
That is not my, that is not my intent, and I appreciate the clarification. They're all going to be open.
Matt, it sounds like.
Matt, shaking your head?
I'm agreeing with everything that's being said. It will be subject to the Open Meetings Act and its current structure. If there is a quorum of the full board of commissioners, we'll also need to notice it as a meeting of the board. So just keep that in mind when you're thinking about how many people are going to be from the full board commissioners on that committee.
Thanks, Matt. That's what I'm trying to avoid. Gotcha. We got there.
But on the table today is just an executive committee.
That is correct.
Has the motion been made already?
Yep.
Okay, second, and.
One more, one more question.
Absolutely, sir.
The people you're planning to appoint to this, have, they agreed to be on it?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Except for Nate.
He didn't have a choice.
Volatol.
That's right, volatol. Any more comments?
So the motion is just to establish an executive committee to form a jail?
It's the executive committee of the steering committee, yep.
Okay.
Me, Commissioner Andrews, Sheriff Shay, Judge Hamlin.
Do you want me to put all those people in there?
Yeah, it's, it's in the resolution here, the wording of it.
We've, they've asked, they've told us they're participating.
Okay.
Clear as mud. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, there we go. Thank you, everyone. Unfinished business, 11A, Facilities Master Plan. Have to be Mr. Forsyth, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, sure. I can give an overview of this item. So we've been studying the Facilities Master Plan, the FMP, for over a year, year now, and a common, common concern expressed by, by you, the Board of Commissioners, is the, the FMP is 498 pages. There's just a lot, a lot of data there, and so it's hard to digest. It, I've read through the entire thing, and it, it does take significant time to get through it and understand the detail. So we thought that an important step as we move forward and we schedule more meetings, for example, we meet with the City Commission next week to discuss this building, was, let's take that report and let's try to strip it down, condense it to the essentials. In addition to that, let's try to create a one-page summary that really just touches upon the high-level goals and objectives and the key elements of the Facilities Master Plan. So that's what we've attempted to do, and, and thank you to Jenny McKeller, who really helped me utilize ChatGPT to, to develop the one-page summary and her thoughtful, creative editing there. So, so in, in addition to condensing the information, I did want to highlight or call out three facilities assessments related to this campus, the Boardman Campus, and share to you information that we've talked about before, which is the, the state of the jail, the issues with this building, and then also the historic courthouse. Primary reason to, to focus on those three buildings is that they share a common boiler system. The boiler to heat all three buildings is located in the jail. So as you think about a new jail, what that could be, it was important to keep in mind that the mechanical in the existing jail heats two other buildings. And then also wanted to highlight the historic courthouse and, and the age of that building. And we know the, the court staff really wants to do significant renovation, but as we're learning that there are, there are structural foundational issues with, with such an old building, and our Parks and Facilities Director, John Chase, he can also describe to you what is new compared to the facilities assessments reports that were developed almost two years ago.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Forsyth. So as Mr. Forsyth mentioned, for the historic courthouse, we'll speak to that one initially. One of the things that is on our capital plan for 2025 is to seal coat the exterior, so above grade, and then work on below grade. And one of the things that we've recognized is, if you look at that building, you'll see a number of places where the bricks have come loose on the building. And we also know that not only have the bricks come loose on the, on the above grade, but then we also know that we've got things below grade, and that makes us ask the question, what caused that? Is it simply age, or is it, is it potentially, or is it potential for the building to have shifted? So one of the things that I'm doing is working with an, an engineer, or working to find an engineer that can come in and do a structural assessment of that building. Before we put 200,000 plus into showing up the water intrusion on the, on the below grade, I want to make sure that the building is not shifting and is not continuing to shift, so we don't put that money into, into that issue.
So we are, we are currently making decisions on our facilities without having complete information about what's going to happen next. You know, we need to have conversation with the Board of Commissioners, with the city and the city commissioners about this building specifically. We have effectuated the leases for 520 West Front Street and the Law Enforcement Center, so those issues are taken care of. What we don't know is, well, what we know also is, we are supposed to be going out for D and E for at least the 911 EOC Center and potentially the Central Services Building that is on the precipice. You're going to hear that at some point, coming forward from Cunningham Limp. We just need to have an understanding of what's next. Are we going to, as, as an example, John gave us a quote of nearly $500,000 for a chiller that is to be replaced in this building in the basement. Do we spend $500,000, put a chiller in the basement if, in the next year and a half to three years, we're going to renovate this building and use what's projected as the Facilities Master Plan is, what, $13 million for a heavy renovation of this building? John and I took a visit to, went to Macomb County and Royal Oak, and we walked through their campus, Royal Oak's campus. Royal Oak did everything on a single campus. They recreated their campus. We learned how and why they did that. It was fascinating. We also sent with, sat with the executive, elected executive hackle at their Comtech Center and talked about the Comtech Center, their jail process, and what they, how they got to a $240 million jail. A lot of good information came from the folks at Macomb County.
Did you say that $240 million?
$240 million jail, that's correct. And in addition to the existing towers that they have, that has about 1,900 inmates. Now, Macomb County has a million people, roughly, and we're, we're not quite there yet. Hoping to close the gates, but, so we have decision-making challenges, right? Now, Macomb County has a million people, roughly, and we're, we're not quite there yet. Hoping to close the gates, but, so we have decision-making challenges right now, and we're weighing possible, possible outcomes versus current decisions of that magnitude. We just really need to have a discussion.
Commissioner Andrews?
I just want to clarify, in the one-page summary, which I, I appreciate, the historic courthouse, two point eight million dollars, or the, the cost estimates, those are costs to fix those structures. Generally, and what I think I hear you saying is that the two point eight million dollars that Tower Pinkster estimate, Tower Pinkster estimated for the historic courthouse did not include any structural assessment of the needs of that building.
That's correct.
They didn't have structural engineers?
They did not.
Wasn't that within the scope of the work we asked them to do?
No, it, it was not. It was not.
Does this build, do any other, should we be concerned about the structure of any other?
We don't have water intrusion in the other buildings. In that building specifically, we have water intrusion below grade.
I thought the, the Law Enforcement Center was having some water intrusion from, from the sidewalk into their gym.
They may have a couple of years ago, but nothing at this point.
High water.
I don't think that two point eight million dollar number included the desired renovation of the historic courthouse that Ms. Giarden and the judges presented here a few months ago.
Right.
So we're looking for, what's the next, what do we do? We're, we're going to be moving on, we believe, we'll be moving on Project Alpha. We have some baseline financial information that we look at, and we're trying to find out, you know, what, what does our debt capacity look like between now and 2036? We have a general understanding of what that is. Once those numbers are refined by Cunningham Limp, we're going to have a better understanding of what debt service will look like for the county. We just, we really, and the, the meeting next week with the city is going to be invaluable to staff to kind of hear the dialogue between the city and the county commissioners, and specifically with this building. And it's highlighted the fact that we have boiler, if you're going to demolish the jail, we've got to find a place to put boilers for the Gov. Center. That's just a reality. So we're hoping to have a step-by-step discussion with you about what's the vision, twenty-five years from now, what are we doing? And that way, we can take appropriate action. Any questions?
Yeah, well, each of these, each of these buildings represents their own special challenges, and there's, there's significant challenges to this building with the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing in the building. Just as I mentioned, we've got the, the chiller in the building that we need to, we need to replace that. It's drawing from a well. It's ejecting out to the river. We've got an air handler in the building that is an, an original air handling, air handler that came with the building. We've got.
And not to put too fine a point on it, I mean, the, the city manager's here, she shared information with me about their meeting on Monday. And, you know, the toilets are flushing. We can't snake the toilets because of fear of the snake going through the piping. And you know how gravity works. Third floor will be fine. Everybody else is going to be not happy. So it's, those little things that are like that, the fact that we have rust laden coming into our cooling system, it's just, it, there are challenges that this facility and, and the county facilities have that we just need to address, and for a lot of reasons, they were not addressed previously, but we're facing at it, we're looking at it right in the face right now. And we do have opportunity. I'm not going to say that this is all, you know, it's great news, but we have, we have some information that we would like to get to you in the future about financial capacity and what we need to look at from your perspective.
Mr. Walter?
Thank you. There's, you can stay up there. It's for you, Mr. Chase, about facilities assessment. There's this estimated forty-seven million in repairs that were identified to bring buildings to baseline standards. Is that, was that from Tower Pinkster, or is that the work that you've been doing on top of that? Because I know you've been doing a, a deeper dive, and I don't think it's even finished yet, but it's like into the minutia. So can you just speak a little bit to that kind of deferred maintenance, or?
Yeah, so that number that you're seeing was represented by Tower Pinkster, so it's not, not data that we've come up with. So that is two years old at this point as well, or near two years old at this point. And we're continuing to evaluate each of the individual systems. But one of the things that we've realized is that that is a monumental task, to be able to evaluate each and the individual systems. So we're looking at a way to be able to, to build a system that will then, and if we've got a meeting next week on what we believe is a final candidate for a system that will help us understand asset management and understand our workflow, kind of combine the two of those together. But then we would build that system as we go.
Okay. What, do you have as part of that assessment that you're doing, I know you've been looking at different companies to help you with that. But within this forty-seven million of repairs, does your department have like a triaged list within that? I know some of that goes into the CIP, but is there like a most recent document? That would help us, because we've talked about, you know, bonding, you know, repairs or other ways of tackling that. I don't know that we would do all of that, but that would be helpful to see some kind of a, I don't know, more detailed triage list.
So our triage list at this point is our capital list. So we've been building on that capital list and taking those items and working through those individual items.
But those are all pretty big items, right?
They are big items, yes.
Which is good. So there's probably, I'm thinking there's, those are big, more expensive items. That's why they're on there. But there's a lot of, you know, forty-seven million, well, let's just call it sixty at this point, because this was from two years ago. And I think you're probably more thorough than Tower Pinkster, so let's say, let's just make it sixty. So within that sixty, upwards of forty-seven anyway, that's not on the CIP, there's probably a lot that's in there that is necessary but doesn't hit the threshold of a CIP. I don't know if I'm.
So I, I see where you're going. So there's a lot of items within that, say, sixty million dollars. It does not reach twenty-five thousand.
Right.
Is that where you're going with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But.
So in terms of triage, I mean, it's, for lack of better words, bailing wire and chewing gum to be able to get some of these things to continue to work. So that's the triage that we, we, as mentioned with the, with the plumbing in this building. We, we have to do what we can in order to be able to have the systems function. But as Mr. Alger mentioned, we can't run a camera down those, because the camera head could potentially get stuck in the, in the piping. And we don't have anybody that will, that will feed a camera down there because of the size of the camera heads. So that's just one example. Sure, certainly there are a number of things that fit into that less than twenty-five thousand, but without really addressing those larger items, we really can't move forward.
Okay.
Now ultimately, it comes down to, we can address a small item, but we have to figure out, are we going to put a chiller in this building? Are we going to figure out how to, instead of, you know, bailing wire and chewing gum with the, with the pipes, are we going to stay here, or are we going to repipe the building? Those are large issues for us to consider.
I mean, considering the two, the two buildings, the EOC and the facility storage building, that we do have numbers on our basically two to three times the price, the cost that Tower Pinkster back of the envelope estimated that they would be, that the working numbers are close to thirty. We thought they were going to be around eleven to fifteen. It does seem like we don't really have our arms around the order of magnitude of these costs. I mean, if, if Tower Pinkster didn't look at the structure of the historic building, you know, that it, it makes me think that forty-seven is sixty is maybe a hundred, potentially, depending on how the, how many issues fit into the, you know, how many problems are we trying to solve? What can, and, and I think we're going to learn a lot more next week. I, I, I do have some concern, because I, I am not personally enamored with the idea of moving the county out of the city. Just am not on board with that concept.
Moving the county seat.
Right, moving the, the county, you know, out to La Frania, and moving the county seat while I appreciate the opportunity for a, a campus. But I'm open to figuring out how we're going to do this. What concerns me is that the Power Pinkster, Tower Pinkster report doesn't necessarily represent the direction we're going. It's a piece, a few pieces of useful information, and then the question is like, how do we come up with a vision when the only vision we have is probably not the vision that at least some of us want to move forward? So I, I don't want to start over again, but I feel a little stuck.
That's the, that's precisely the challenging, the challenge we're experiencing. You know, we could put ourselves in a decision-making tree with any given decision like that, Commissioner Andrews. We are not leaving this campus. That puts us into a lane, right? We start focusing on, okay, we'll study this campus, and how can we arrange, rearrange this campus to accommodate the entire county? You know, we know we can't do that. The Health Department's going to stay up on the Hill. We're relatively confident of that. But the, could the Law Enforcement Center occupants be moved here? Can we have a new Gov. Center along Washington? Or we have a new jail, law enforcement, city police, those concepts? That, those decisions, the, the big decisions that you're going to make will drive those other decisions for us. Simple fact, we're not going to abandon this campus, and what does that mean to us? We know what that means to us. We've got to address this building. We've got to address law enforcement, jail, et cetera. So whether or not after next, next Wednesday, you know, maybe there's a desire to have an ad hoc to tackle some of these things more intimately with staff and Cunningham Limp and those that are, that are involved in the process, so that we can have some of those discussions offline, and then but we, we just need to have some, some type of direction from the respective boards on what we want to do. This, even your, and Commissioner Andrews' point is fair. We don't necessarily want to rely on Tower Pinkster's estimates. But what we do have is a relatively new estimate for a chiller that's five hundred thousand dollars. So if it's a thirteen million dollar fix for this building to have the upgrades that it needs to have, well, there's five hundred thousand of it right there. And the systems that we have in the guts of this building are far insufficient for moving forward into the future.
If I could add to it, if we could just get consensus on the major concepts, put aside the proposed building plans and just the concepts of, is there consensus around having a dual campuses? And maybe this campus is the primary service hub, and then La Frania is more of a second hub? Or do you want to explore a decentralized portfolio, which is challenging in that we lose whatever adjacencies we have existingly? So we just need, as Nate is saying, we just need a high-level consensus around, not so much the pictures, but some of the concepts we're all trying to work towards, too.
I think that will become more clear after next week's joint meeting and our little tour. Yeah, we don't need to make a decision today.
We don't, and I, I anticipate that at some, after next week's meeting, maybe it would be helpful for staff to present us with three options. Option A, Tower Pinkster, you know, we move everybody out. Option B, two, two campuses. Option three, you know, seven mini campuses, whatever, right? Give us something to react to, and, and we can at least sort of take a poll, but I, I think that's, it's.
Yeah.
Have some concepts that we can either respond to.
But to Chris's point, and it's like, and Nate's point, they'll have a better idea of that once we have a better idea. I don't think anybody on this, and I'm not asking for a vote, but I don't think anybody here is going to support seven mini campuses.
Then that will be easy to eliminate.
So there you go.
So there's a direction.
Well, it's, you know, we're kind of that way right now, so it's really, I see us consolidating a little bit, but with the way that we're building and the way we're already spread out and the leases, we're not, you know, it's going to be sort of in between.
But from an operations standpoint, it's not, it's just not working for us.
I stopped in to see.
How many years has it been?
No, I'm sorry, apologize.
I stopped in to see Noah yesterday and chatted with their staff, and to get from this building to that building is twenty minutes. That's not really all that challenging. But to do that on a cadence that is what the staff wants to see from us, us to interact with those staff, I spent thirty minutes maybe just interacting with the DPW staff. They don't get that. The people in this building have all the administration they don't want. We walk around this building and interrupt their services all day long, and they just, they see us a lot, but we don't have the ability to go elsewhere. And then some of the state, our own state, county buildings, Ross Common and Crawford County are the local examples that are coming to mind, Lillona County, they're all one building. So when you walk through the, that door at Crawford, at Ross Common, you're met with a corrections officer that you go through a screening process. It's because the courts are involved. You can't have guns and weapons in courts. So it's, it's, there are, we have ideas. We have models that we could bring to you. And I, I like the idea of giving three options. We can do that.
Maybe it's five. I don't know. But it can't be, it can't be twenty, right? And it can't be one.
Yep.
So pick a number.
One's not enough, and twelve's too many, so.
Yeah. I will also just say, I don't know where anybody else is, but my feeling is that this building is probably not going anywhere. If an EOC building is a fifteen million dollar building at ten thousand square feet to, this bill, assuming eight million on the, on the cost that Tower Pinkster came up with is actually twelve million, it's still less than eighty million to build this building over. Which is to, to say, as long as this building is not getting torn down, someone's going to occupy it, and it needs a chiller. So I just don't see how we don't put a chill, chiller in this building. It's not a question of whether, it's a question of where and what and how, but to me, you know, I, I appreciate that you, you don't really want to put a new furnace in your house right before you sell it. But on the other hand, if you put a new furnace in your house right before you sell it, you're either paying for it upfront, or you're paying for it in the deduction, in the value of the house, right? In the negotiation. So one way or another, this building needs a chiller. I cannot, I don't know if, are we tearing down this building? Does anyone think that? I, I, that's hard for me to see. So I, I'm happy to keep an open mind when we go through the building next week, next month, next week, whenever it is.
Well, I think the, I love the idea of options too, but they need to come with some sort of price tags too, and not just a, a list and a visual, right? We need to say like, well, if we do this, then this is the range of what we're looking at. If we do this, this is what the range of what we're looking at. Maintenance and new build, you know, options within that.
We can do that.
But just to compare them to each other, right? Even if they're not the right number, but at least we can see the, the expensive option and then the cheap option.
Yeah, we all know it's going to be more expensive tomorrow, so it's just how it is.
Well, there are no cheap options. Maintaining an old building is, it never ends.
In, in a new building, the cost to maintain that building, at least for a short period of time, is zero. So one of the, the Royal Oak concept, they completely refigured their, their campus. And to help pay for the debt service related to that, they joined into a public partnership, with, public-private partnership with Henry Ford, and they built a parking garage. Their debt service is being paid for by somebody else. So if we could get our heads wrapped around what possibilities do we have here? We start looking at the, can we have first-floor retail and affordable housing against Eighth Street that the county benefits from in, in the long run? It helps us pay for these long, these large debts, and they are large. But we have ideas. I, for one, could conceive of this building going down. But that doesn't matter. It's what the collective commission and the city commission want to see with this building, and like we've said, you're going to see that next week. And while we're talking about the chiller, we have an active quote for four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Four hundred and eighty-two thousand.
That was going to be in front of you today for approval. It is going to go up by eighteen thousand if we don't approve it. And it was a decision that we made because of the conversation that we're going to have today and next week with the city. If it is something that this board wants to consider, you may want to consider approving John to move forward that.
Is that a shared cost with the city?
Twenty-four percent of that cost will be with the city.
Is that installed?
Four hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred dollars from Hearst Mechanical. We went to public bid. Those bids came back. That was, that was their bid.
That was, that's installed, though, right?
That is installed, yes.
All the way across.
If we, we have a deadline of May nine to get a submittal in. If we don't have that, if we don't hit that deadline, then it would go up by eighteen thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars.
So are we at critical failure stage where, aside from the monetary savings, it's like, I understand it's important, but it's like.
We are ejecting water out to the river.
Yep.
That is not something that we can continue to do.
If it fails, it fails, and to that point, the, the eagle is looking at this, and John has been in conversation. And to that point, the, the Eagle is looking at this and John has been in conversation with them about, we're had, we have a plan to change that discharge and they've not yet pulled the trigger on us, but yeah, it's-
Can you email it to us?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Walter, go ahead.
Well, I don't want to approve something that I haven't like physically put my eyes on, but can you just email it to us to look at?
Well, so the installation, the insulation of the new chiller will not affect, will that-
We're not going to have a special meeting.
Change the discharge once it's installed, or is that something we have to do later on?
No, we've, we've speced a, a system that is called a closed-loop system because right now we're pulling from a well.
Yeah, okay.
And we would, instead of be pulling from a well, we would be pulling from the internal system, so it'd be a closed loop, no ejection out.
I propose we take a five-minute break while administration emails us a copy of the, uh, the bid. If we, if it's a $20,000 cost impact to delay that, I think we owe it to try to see if there's an appetite on this board to pass it today.
I agree.
I concur. So we'll do a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Are you talking about is this part of the heating process? It's-
Not us.
I'll forward it to you, John.
Alrighty, so I hope everyone has checked their email, they've seen the request for bid, or excuse me, for approval.
And John can explain this. He's been working with this company for quite a while on this and, uh-
Yeah, so the item, the item that's before you is to replace the chiller system in this particular building. So it's located in the basement. This is a system that, that provides the air conditioning to the building. So we went to public bid in the beginning of April with that, received those, or late March, I'm sorry, I guess it was. That came back and we had three folks that attended, or three different companies that attended the, um, the bid process and the mandatory bid meeting. And Hearst was the end winner for this one. So they came back with a bid of $482,200 for that. So as, as was discussed earlier, this would be a closed-loop system, so where our current system draws water from a well that has a significant amount of iron bacteria in that well. And I'll be happy to show you that. It's in the basement. We'll have to take a look at that on the 14th as well. But it draws that in, that iron bacteria clogs the heat exchangers right now, requiring us to, to change those heat exchangers out regularly or clean those heat exchangers out. And then we've asked, had to change some of the pumps over the last few years, a couple of times since those have been, been initially installed. So this would be a, a closed-loop system that would eliminate that well and then it would basically, all the, all the fluid would stay within the system as opposed to drawing from the well and it would no longer pump water out to the, to the river.
Mr. Chairman.
Holy cow, look at all those. I'm going to start with Commissioner Walter, but I'll be right with you, Mr. Hensel.
Uh, given this was planned in the CIP and is slightly over budget, it looks like some contingency is there to cover the overage, I'll make the motion to award the contract of $482,000 and $482,200 to Hearst Incorporated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Walter, second by Commissioner Hensel. Any more comments? Commissioner Nelson?
Two questions. What's the timeline on getting this project done?
So we'll do this project in the fall. So after we shut down the air conditioning system for the fall, we'll do that project.
Okay. I guess the other one isn't a question for you. My, my comments, even if we decided today to evacuate, tear down this building, we're probably two years out anyway.
Yeah.
Easily.
And that's, yeah, that's, that's the shortest possible thing. So sometimes you have to bite the bullet on something like this. You don't get to pick the timing. And when coolers and equipment go, in my experience in business, they always went on Friday at 5:05.
That's true.
And so, and it was always the July 4th weekend. So I did a lot of, had a lot of cooling equipment. So anyway, I, I'm going to support this because I think it's, we're, we're in a situation, we have to do it. Let's do it now. Let's take our lumps and move on. It doesn't mean that we're committed to this building or not, it's-
We are for a few years anyway, at least.
Well, I mean, like I said, if we said today, we're, we still need this. Commissioner Flynn.
Um, I am just wondering if there are any capital improvement grants that you've been researching to cover the, the gap as well?
So there are some capital improvement grants. Unfortunately, those are, those are drying up. So we did apply for a grant last year through the, um, through Eagle for the Law Enforcement Center. I've been continuing to watch for that particular one to come about again. So that was a State of Michigan grant, but it was a pass-through federal grant.
All right, I'll send you a few.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I agree with Commissioner Nelson that whether we tear this building down or not, we've still got to do day-to-day business for the next two to three or four or five years. So we have a motion on the floor. Bonnie, if you'd roll call vote for me, please.
Spence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Hensel?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
Thank you for taking it up. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing it to us and as you need it. Okay. Any new business? I didn't think so. Cliff, it's your turn. Unless it's going to take more than five minutes?
No, sir. Unless there's live discussion.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Andrews, unless it's going to take longer than five minutes? Thank you.
Cliff, DePuy IT, just a quick update on divestiture between the city and the county. That work began on April the 11th, 2025. The city began the work, that was on a Friday. They completed the work over the weekend and on, on April the 14th, 2025, they went live with all departments except the LEC, Law Enforcement Center. They plan on going live with the LEC, bringing that onto their network by June 1st of this year. We have been working this week and as the last week with the city on standing up their own, for the city PD, their own lean, which is a law enforcement information network, and then NCIC, which is when they do a warrant, or excuse me, check for warrants and things. That's a federal response. And as of to this morning, we've had no challenges between the two networks. Everything seems to be flowing and working well. And that's really all I have. We have, you might look at, think about, I would ask, what about the difference in, in income? So right now, IT is down three FTEs. We began, we have an ITSM system, which is an Information Technology Service Management System. That's a fancy name for ticketing system. Our current ticketing system went live April the 5th of 2021. To date, uh, excuse me, as of Monday, we've had 17,825 tickets. Out of those 17,000 tickets, 2,327 were this, from the city. So it represents about 13.5% tickets representing the city versus what we do with the county. Just a little bit, some numbers, I like of numbers. Right now, we support 455 cell phones throughout the county. Staff, employee, those are county phones, uh, cell phones. Software applications, we support 90,764,000 software applications. Hardware, when you think of hardware, it's just not computers. It's computers, monitors, printers, network switches, everything else. We have 4,005. Out of those, 3,925 are under warranty. We're currently doing a massive amount of installs as we speak. It's about 80 installs. We have a, what we call an evergreen strategy. So every four years, we replace a computer. When I first got here, it was like, I have a 10-year-old machine. I didn't know when, if you pulled the information from Dell, it was actually a two-year-old machine. So by implementing the evergreen strategy, we've, we've went through our first four-year completion, so everyone has a brand-new machine. And if you look at some of the machines, they have a service tag on them, has a different color. We use a different color for every year. So we can say, guess what? If you have a pink, or excuse me, a blue, and I think blue this year, you're getting a new computer. So people automatically know when they're going to get a new computer. We have 103 servers that we support and out of that, there's 17 enterprise applications that impact the entire county. So that's my update.
Any questions for Cliff? Commissioner Walter.
Sorry, I do have a question, but, um, outside of, thank you for the financial update because we talked a little bit about that before, about what kind of a hit we're going to take with this change. The other thing, I don't know if we discussed really, is, um, with us divesting from the city, how does this change our insurance? I mean, it sounds like we have less liability than we had before, perhaps? Have we renegotiated our insurance related to that?
We have not. So we did our renewal late fall of 2024, so this would be something that MMRMA would look at in 2025. But they did, and I'm going to guess the MMLs, or I'm sorry, the city's insurance carrier also suggested that we do separate the systems. So I'm assuming our liability will go down. I don't know that it's going to change the, the amount that we pay because they didn't know what this relationship looked like. They knew that we had an IT agreement, but they didn't know that we were so intertwined to have what we experienced in June. We started educating them about, this is the nature of this relationship and they are like, that's not a good thing necessarily, so. But I think Ms. Vogel's here as well. I think the separation has begun, has been very, very good and helpful for everybody to understand what's going on and why we had things and why we don't have things anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
While, while Cliff is here, we have a new update relatively as of yesterday that you, some of you commissioners may have heard, that we've had significant challenges with our computer-aided dispatching and the ability to run lean through Talon and things like that. So Cliff, would you provide that update?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So, um, we had a, we had a meeting on April the 16th with some key players. So it had been Corey Lee and Duska, the 911 director, and myself, two individuals from Tyler. And then we had subsequent stand-up meetings and what we determined was, number one, verbiage means a lot, definitions means a lot. We kept saying firewalls. What firewall to them was an appliance. It's a virtual private network appliance. That appliance was configured improperly, which we had no control over. It's done by Core. Core handles all of the connections for law enforcement agencies throughout the state of Michigan, the courts and everything. They are, they are the vendor. So our network talks to this device and that device and talks to Tyler and then talks to the federal government and then back. Short answer is that if, that, that device had been improperly set up, so the ports were different, so it was able to send data, but to listen to get their data back, the port was incorrect. So once we got all the players from Tyler, all their engineers and us and on the call and Core, got everyone together, we were determined that's what the cause was. And so yesterday, and we've had a subsequent meeting yesterday. As of yesterday, Mobile CAD is being updated from NCIC, which didn't happen in the past. And then so the, automatically populates. So when an officer runs a tag, it automatically updates the CAT, Mobile CAD, which reduces the amount of, of challenges they may have or mistakes when they type in the information. which reduces the amount of, of challenges they may have or mistakes when they type in the information, so it's automatically updated. Short answer is, it's working. The next piece of that puzzle now for us is to get the Michigan State Police back onto our network, and so that's what we're working on now. Getting, not onto our network, but into the, like, Mobile C A D system, so. But after thirteen months, it's working. Come to find out, it was a misconfiguration on someone else's equipment.
On Core's part.
Yep.
That's fantastic news, thanks, I know the sheriff was happy when he told me that this morning, he's like, hey, look, it works! So, thanks on, on behalf of him, any more questions for Cliff? Alright, so we're gonna go to public comment, I know the city manager is just dying to tell us something.
I have a commit, just a quick commissioner report, just real quick.
Do it after.
After a second public comment, okay.
That's fine, go ahead. Can we make it two? No, I'm kidding.
Very funny, Chairman Seifert. Hi, good afternoon, Liz Vogel, uh, city manager, city of Traverse City and resident of Acme Township, so Commissioner Nelson may regret having given me his personal cellphone, um, just kidding.
It wasn't the real number.
I'm here to speak on a few things, but I wanted to specifically touch upon enforcing of our no camping ordinance at the pines that took place this morning. I really wanted to echo and underscore the comments that were made by Vice Chair Andrews at our meeting on Monday. The financial support from the city and the county, especially the county, but both together, was historic in order to keep, in order for the special land use permit to pass and for Safe Harbor to be open for two years and have that funding secured in conjunction with other funding sources, but this morning, we were able to, without arrest, without citation, without protest, with an incredible collaboration, safely remove the last fourteen individuals in the pines and immediately begin cleaning up the remaining camps that were there. I want to thank the chairman for the support this morning at the E O C. Wanted to also thank Sheriff Shay, under Sheriff Phulus, who was here just a minute ago, and the entire Sheriff's Department for their support of the Traverse City team, Michigan State Police and others who made that happen. The outcome was the best possible outcome that we could have hoped for and it was, it was impressive work. The word that I haven't used is celebratory, because those fourteen people, along with the other in the shelters, are still unhoused and housing will solve homelessness, but this was an important pivotal moment for not just Traverse City, but the county and the region to move this needle forward, so I just wanted to thank you so much personally and professionally. And, you know, whatever narrative there has been in the past about relationships between the city and the county, I hope we can put that to rest. I really, I really feel strongly, you know, I, I've gotten to know Administrator Alger and Deputy Forsyth for many years, actually, prior to me coming on board here in, in Mesaki, and we do work really well together. And, and again, funding Safe Harbor was a, was an incredible testament to that. We're gonna be working together with M S four permitting, hopefully, in a, in a really collaborative way. We'll be dealing with these facility issues together and I will be sure to report back to my commission on your vote, so they're prepared for our twenty-four percent contribution to that. The I T separation was supported by administration and it went off, that, that turnover went off flawlessly in April, so I just, I hope that we can turn a page on these narratives. I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic, but with regards to, in, in the task force, again, I'll be working with Nate and Chris closely on that as we move forward, so the hard work still continues, today was a very big day, a, a big day. It was a, it was a really important day moving the needle with all the partners, and so I just wanted to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and thank you to your entire team for all the support that they gave us this morning.
Thank you, I appreciate, Senator, Liz and I had a conversation at the E O C center this morning to talk about our relationship and moving forward. And I don't speak for everybody properly, I don't, sometimes I'm not sure I speak for myself. But in this time, I think it's a great idea or a great movement forward in a relationship between the city and the county. On specific this project, it is certainly a bridge that we're gonna cross together. And I really appreciate all the hard work that the city has done, we, we wrote the check, but the city did the heavy lifting. There was a, I'm not gonna name his name, but there was a member of the T C P, uh, Police Department that planned the operation and I am flabbergasted, it was fantastic, the plan, and I was glad to be a part of that this morning. And it is the best possible outcome that happened and I'm very happy that we're taking that step forward together. Anybody wanna comment? Thank you. Alright, so Commissioner Flynn, oh, I'm sorry, Harold, seeing we're changing rules.
No, that's, that's quite alright, Harold Lassner's Acme Township. I, I wanna thank Commissioner Walter and Commissioner Andrews for their comments on, and their position with respect to what we do with our facilities. One of the things in my many years as an engineer that was beaten into me took quite a few beatings, but they were pretty profound, is never to ever go before an executive and ask them a question unless the question, A, is very specific and B, the choices have a price attached. And I'm afraid that that is what was put before this commission, was a violation of those two principles. You must have, you, you cannot possibly talk about whether or not we're gonna have one campus or seventeen without some idea of what that costs. And so what the commissioners have asked for is absolutely what you need. You need to have clear choices, three is a good number, and those, those have to have a cost estimate. Otherwise, it is just madness, you cannot make a rational philosophical decision without a, an order of magnitude cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey, Bruce? Commissioner Flynn, I'm sorry, I cut you off earlier, my apologies.
Oh, it's okay, that's the end of public comment. I just wanted to, just let everyone know, Networks Northwest is hosting my career quest tomorrow at the Civic Center. I think it's gonna be about a thousand teenage students from around the region that come and work with all sorts of different skilled trades and experience, actually hands-on experience, and I will be volunteering with them all day today, so tomorrow, so look for pictures of all these young kids getting involved with the skilled trades.
Fantastic, thousand kids, I'm not gonna be there. Commissioner Walter?
Just a quick update, our process work group, for lack of a better term, met yesterday. We had a good productive hybrid meeting and we are gonna meet, sounds like one last time, on May twenty-seventh at one thirty is what we agreed on. And we had a great discussion both on opioid funding process as well as the cannabis funding and we hope to then bring back the recommendations to the board at our, as soon as we can, after the meeting on the twenty-seventh. So that's probably the first meeting in June, I would think we'd have our recommendations.
Beautiful, thank you very much for that update, anyone else?
Yeah, Green Lake Township will be hosting Coffee with the County on the twenty-seventh, if you guys wanna partake in some donuts or some coffee.
Where is it?
Me.
At the Township Hall.
Township, Green Lake Township Hall.
Twenty-seventh? Alright? Time's that starting at eight?
Nine. Nine o'clock.
Mimosa's with the county. Oh, I changed that, it's gonna be Mimosa's with the county on the twenty-seventh, we're going to the
So there. Anyone else? Mister?
Two things, uh, to, tonight is our, one of our recess opportunities, it is at the Goodwill Inn located on, it's not the Goodwill Inn, it's the food, it's in the Arrow Park Drive area and we can shoot you an address. What's it?
Food Rescue.
Food Rescue, thank you, um, that's from five to seven today. And I sent this to you, I believe on Monday, that we were notified by M E D C that we received a grant and the amount of nine hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar, and eighty-four dollars for improvements at the Civic Center. While we're sitting here, Governor Whitmer did announce that as part of the revitalization and placemaking program, that we are in fact, and rece, been awarded that grant and we were, it looks like the only county to receive a grant, so.
Good news.
Good news.
Good job.
Are you allowed to share a little more information?
Yes, so, where's John? John and, you know, Maxwell worked on this grant, it involves Nortay and future visions for Nortay as well as facilities.
Yeah, this is a collaborative effort, so Maxwell led the charge, Jill and, Jill, Sylph and Nortay and myself supported in that process and, as was mentioned, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars and change and that will support a few things at the Civic Center, so one is the south building at the Civic Center, which is currently occupied by Nortay, they call it the Nortay Clubhouse. Our plan is to renovate that south building, bring this up a little bit here, renovate that south building and renovate the restrooms in that south building and then extend that south building to be able to add on a, a two-plus bay garage. And that will help us, as we go through the central storage facility, to then be able to potentially move Nortay into the, what would be former facilities building and then to reimagine that space into Nortay's, Nortay's headquarters. The addition, or the next piece of that is to build the pump track at the northwest corner of the property, which would be a great amenity addition and then also to add some signage to both the north and south end, so, very pleased and, and honored to have been receiving that.
And it would be a good time to go visit the Civic Center because there's a lot going on there right now, the trail is well under, well under progress and the new signage is up.
Yes, we've got new interior signage, it looks fantastic, we're, we're thrilled at the job that, that Pro Image Design did for, for us on that. A J's Construction and Spicer are doing a fantastic job as well with the walking track. We are on track for that, for that project at this point, in fact, maybe even a slight bit ahead.
John, is it too early to give, I, I know the money is promised, but what's the timeline for receipt of those funds and the renovation to the restrooms and clubhouse as well as the pump track?
So that's a, that's a better question for Maxwell, he's been working with M E D C, so he'd have more information on that one. So we were just, just notified of this in the last, last couple of days here, so more information to be learned and more information to be shared.
That is about two million dollars of grant funding that we have dumped into the Civic Center over the last year and a half to two years, so I absolutely fantastic efforts, John.
Great news.
Thank you.
Somebody's doing something right in the application process, congratulations, thank you. Anyone, anyone? Want you to adjourn?
Yeah.
There you go, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.